Okay, the time is six thirty. I'm gonna call this meeting together of the city council and the WPCA. It's Monday, December first, and if we would all stand and pledge a flag. Do a roll call. We've got Councilman Bayes, Councilwoman Rachel Hanen-Harrell, welcome.
Welcome.
Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Rouette, and Councilman Oliver.
And Paul's out there somewhere.
And Paul, is Paul?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, hi, Paul.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so we'll move right into it. I'd like to entertain a motion to open the meeting for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? No?
Off to a good start.
Alright. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to item number two. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, I'd like to make a motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry, one abstention on the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Rachel.
Rachel, thank you.
There's three abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Alright.
Left side.
Alright, so we'll move on to item number three. If I could entertain a motion for a vote to authorize a mayor to apply for the Recreation Trails Grant for the terms described in the Assistant City Planner's Memo dated December first, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nate, would you like to come up?
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
For the record, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. Yeah, we're looking to apply. This is a continuation of the Red Mountain Trail project that we had applied for about three years ago. That was, that prior grant was for planning and construction of a trail section behind the Ocean State Joblot Plaza on city-owned land. We have, on that project, we've reached the design phase and we've received most of our approvals. We did have an issue with a section of that trail that we had to address. Mainly, we were going to cross over the Ocean State Joblot Plaza and had some issues with easements associated with that, so we're just gonna basically go from North Elm Street all the way to the Newfield Road Bridge over the Norbert River. The second grant proposal is gonna be to, just a planning grant to, to look at the bridge itself and make the plan for the crossing there. It's a historical rail bridge and there are, you know, there may be issues with that. And then doing sidewalk on Newfield Road all the way down to the intersection with Main Street and Winston Road. So it'll kind of connect the trail all the way from North Elm Street to Newfield Road and then to Winston Road there, so it'll be a nice complete section. Whereas the prior grant only got us to the bridge and it didn't cross us over the bridge. Not sure if we're gonna get awarded this grant, because we haven't actually done any construction on the prior section, but because it's just a planning grant, we think we have a pretty good shot at it. The match for this, it's twenty percent match. The engineering department was able to find money in the TAR account, which is money that comes back from the state for these types of projects, so it'd be a cash match. And we're looking to, let's see, the cost that we would incur, the match would be twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And the amount we'd be asking the state for would be eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that would just cover basically from planning all the way through to permitting, so that we could apply for future rounds for implementation and just start construction right from there.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Nate, I don't know if you know this or not, but this project is very near and dear to my heart.
I did, yeah.
So absolutely in support. Now, this'll take the bridge section. We always talked about way back in the day about having, you know, a safe crossing system with lighted pedestrian crossing lights and a crosswalk there to get over to Winston Road. Does this part of include anything for that, or this is just getting over the bridge to Newfield Road?
Right, so that's a good point. So it would get us to Newfield Road. There is further trail property on the other side of Newfield Road. That property is in private ownership. There's been some, you know, we've had conversations with the property owner about potentially doing a trail easement. They're planning on developing that property, so it would be part of a larger project, but they seemed amenable to it. For the meantime, this would be at a minimum sidewalks on Newfield Road, where currently that section doesn't have any sidewalks. To just allow pedestrian traffic to go to Main Street and into the neighborhoods on the north end there.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to, was how, and since you're there already, how is it gonna terminate at the end of, you know, when it gets to Newfield? You're saying it's just gonna run a sidewalk down towards like the firehouse?
Yes, exactly, and it'll tie into whatever the sidewalk system there on Main Street is.
Okay.
That's the plan for now. It could be as much as, you know, the ideal would be to have a ten-foot wide paved multi-use trail going down there. But the Baptist Church property there, they have a parking lot. We haven't gotten permission from them that would encroach onto their property. We have initiated, tried to get into talks with them to see if we could potentially have some kind of deal where, you know, we provide something to them and maybe, maybe improvements to their property in exchange for getting a little bit of access to improve that there. So at a minimum, I think that'll all come out in the planning process. But at a minimum, we could work within the city own right away and put sidewalks to make that connection for now.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to item number four. Like to entertain a motion to approve a small cities project number one forty-three dash PI dash fifty-eight in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for emergency heating repairs.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Is there any discussion, any questions? Sorry, first meeting.
First day on the job.
Yeah.
First couple hours.
Yeah. David, do you wanna speak to it? Can you?
Yeah, sure. Small Cities Committee did meet and reviewed this, and given the fact that it is for an emergency situation for home heating, we decided to move it up to the board for full approval, or the council for full approval. There's plenty of equity in this home in order to do this and support this, so the committee recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. It seems so current liens on the property, total one fifty-six, six twelve. Is a lot of that mortgage, do you guys know, or Dan? Enter me. You want? Either of you know, whoever knows. Yeah, it just seems like the equity at a hundred percent's one ninety-six, or a one fifty-six, it's encroaching out plenty for the twenty-five hundred, but it's.
Well, the other.
Yes, if you scroll down in the materials you have there. So there's the approval request, then there's the estimate from Big Dog Mechanical, and then there's a title report. And so the title report shows you what encumbrances there are.
Yeah.
So it shows that it is a mortgage. There's an open and mortgage deed
Okay.
for one fifty-six, seven fifty, and in fact, they attach, the title search attaches both the deed into these, this fella, and also it attaches a copy of the mortgage deed.
Yeah.
So that would answer your question.
Okay, yeah, I can see the mortgage here. The, well, the other thing too is, this is the city appraisal, not an actual appraisal. So it could be worth more in value as well, in reality. Are the. So, again, we recommend its approval.
Are the, just a quick question, basically what you said. So city appraisals tend to be more conservative, is that what you're?
They use an algorithm. They don't necessarily go right to the property and do a physical inspection of the property or appraisal of the property. So it's an automated valuation? Yep.
Thank you.
No, no, that's exactly right. So what Councilman Oliver's referring to is that it's the appraised value as shown on the assessor's street card.
Yes.
And everybody knows that those are unreliable, I guess.
Well, nobody would sell their home for it.
Right.
So, yeah.
It's so generally, they're conservative.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to item number five.
Any opposed?
What?
Any opposed?
No. I'll take this one in two parts. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and refer the proposed sale of four ninety-two Prospect Street property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Connecticut General Statutes, Section eight dash twenty-four referral.
So moved.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Second, Mr. Bayes?
That was Armon.
Armon?
Either one of us.
Any questions? So, do you want Jamie to explain it?
Yeah, so, well, I think, I've seen this property before, familiar with this property. I know it was, was it a tax sale that ended up?
Jamie's here.
Oh, Jamie's here.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi, Jamie.
New people. This was a blighted property that we took due to a blight, so it was no tax sale. So we've had the property fully cleaned out, and the recommendation now is to put it up for sale. So this is the first step to make that happen.
And it's already been cleaned up?
It's been as clean as we're gonna clean it, so yes. Yeah, all the, the majority of all the junk that could be removed has been removed. And the property was left in broom swept condition per an RFP that we did to find the vendor to do it.
Okay.
Thank you. What I can explain, Councilman Bayes, is that what this is talking about is on General Statute, Section eight dash twenty-four, that requires that before a municipality does a certain number of things, including selling any city-owned property, it has to be referred to Planning and Zoning for their opinion as to whether it complies with the city's plan of development.
Right.
So that's what has to happen.
Correct.
And as Mr. Secora mentioned, this was a property that the city took title to in a blight foreclosure case.
Yep.
And now the city wants to sell it. We're, we're gonna go, Mr. Secora, Jamie has already prepared requests for proposals to try to sell this property, and this is a necessary step before we do that.
And just, just for my knowledge, what did, what do we have in cleanup costs?
Cleanup costs were just under twenty-five K on top of other ancillary costs. The city did some of its own cleanup. We removed a lot of the trees surrounding it, because you couldn't even get vehicles or dumpsters into the property.
Yep.
So, but this is so far all been funded through the blight fund.
Okay. But we'll recoup those costs in the sale, that's part of the.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, we should.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'll call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just ask a question quickly? Sorry. Yeah, it's just, it's, okay, never mind, then I'll wait.
We're gonna go on to the second part of that anyway.
Okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that contingent upon a favorable, favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a vote to authorize a mayor to proceed with the sale negotiations derived from an RFP bid.
So moved.
One second, whatever.
Kevin? Questions?
Just for the edification of the council, at some point, can we have a presentation about our blighted properties?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something we can do in public, or we have to do it offline, if you will.
We can bring that to a council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I feel like that's something I used to ask for too. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, this'll do in two parts as well. Entertain a motion, acting as a water pollution control authority, vote to approve twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cent payment to Wright Pierce Engineering from Fund four ninety, sanitary capital, sanitary sewer capital improvement for invoice number two four seven four nine zero, dated December first, 2025, for the Harris Drive Pump Station Design Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to B. I'll entertain a motion, acting as a water pollution control authority, a vote to approve thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents payment to Wright Pierce Engineering from Fund four ninety, sanitary sewer capital improvement for invoice number two four seven six one six, dated December first, 2025, for the Winston Road Forest Main Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated December first, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to number eight, entertain a motion for business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, who do we wanna start with? Mr. Farley?
The last meeting, the joint meeting that we had between the Board of Finance and City Council, Chris Catchmar from Fiducian Advisors gave a presentation on both the Police and Fire Pension Plan and the City Employees Retirement Plan. And I've just got some follow-up information on that, but I know there's always a little bit of confusion, so just to clarify it. Fiducian Advisors is our financial advising company that makes suggestions on what gets invested into those funds. Principal is the custodian that holds those funds in those plans for us. So having said that, I've got a, an email from Fiducient that says, "We're combining with four other NFP Investment Advisory and Wealth Management businesses to form a single firm with the same focus of providing a high level of service to organizations like yours." NFP is National Financial Partners. Importantly, there'll be no changes to your team at Fiducient or the services that we provide to you. So what's not changing? Service team, service model, and the cost will remain unchanged. Our firm contacts remain the same. Third-party vendors remain the same. And the name does not. The name is now listed as National Financial Partners, soon to be changed again to Wealth Spire. That's gonna be a unified brand that they think will strengthen their ability to deliver expanded solutions and services while continuing to uphold the trust that we've placed in them.
Will there be a test?
Further.
There'll be a test on the name changes?
Sam, sorry.
Test on the name changes?
Yeah.
Excellent example of brand management.
Exactly. Alright, in addition to that, now starting on January first of 2026, and this is a letter from Principal, our custodian. "So aligning with industry standards and best practices, trade executions and cash movement requests will move to online submission through principal.com." Currently, the way it works is Fiducient sends suggestions on the trades that would be approved by the trustees, for example. Let's say we need to realign our portfolio, because it's out of balance. So they would send those requests to me, I'd review them. It needs to be signed off by two of us, myself and either the mayor, or myself and Olivia, our comptroller. It then goes back to Principal. Principal then sends that information to Principal. Principal sends me forms, which I need to review and approve, get them dual-signed, and return to Principal to have those trades enacted. It's, it's a lot of work, and it seems to go in circles. So this, this new approach with an online submission, and I'll just give you a little synopsis on how that's gonna work, but... So, they go on to say that Principal Custody Solutions will charge a fee of one hundred dollars per transaction for trade execution requests that are not submitted through principal.com. So if we choose to continue to do it the same way that we've been doing it, we'll be paying additional fees. Which doesn't make sense, because the new process is so much more streamlined. A fee for cash movement requests not submitted through principal.com will apply in the future. Trade execution and cash movement requests not submitted through principal.com will be processed on a best efforts basis. So you can see, they're definitely trying to get away from performing in that direction. Online trade execution and cash movement requests, replace the need for you to complete a directive template and email your request to us for processing. Other benefits might include later cutoff times for most mutual funds for same-day trading and cash movement. Also allows for initial purchases and full liquidations, the ability to upload trade files, and real-time confirmation of the transaction, transaction activity that's entered. So Fiducient, soon to be NFP or Wealth Spire, whatever they are, will be doing those transactions for us at no charge. We'll have to initiate it through the system. They'll make the recommendations through the system to us, we'll approve it through the system, but Fiducient will send the executions to Principal. It takes that step away from us. Transactions will be done, returned to us in the form of an email. So it's just a different way of doing business. It's a little more streamlined, and it's not gonna cost us any more money. Clear as mud?
Yeah, it's clear as mud. We're not tied to them for any particular duration or contract. When was the last time that we shopped this out? Can we shop it out?
With who?
To an RFP?
Through Fiducient or Principal?
Yeah, have somebody else look at managing it?
It's, we've been with them as long as, this'll be my eighth year.
I don't know if they're good or not good. I mean, I've stayed in a lot of relationships I shouldn't have been in for a longer period of time than necessary, but I don't know, it's, this seems convoluted. I don't know if it sounds, how it sounds to everybody else, but it just seems like it's an improvement, but it, I'm not really sure that it is.
I, I think it is.
Okay.
It is. I think it streamlines the process a little bit. It ends up less work in my office, and it's not costing us anything to do it, unless we choose to do it the same way that we did.
No.
If we did, then we're paying a hundred dollars a transaction. If we do it through the online process, which is gonna be much simpler to perform in our, in our office.
Are we happy with their management, with their advice, with their process, with the?
Personally, I'm, personally, I'm extremely happy with them. Anytime I have to reach out to them for any reason at all, they get back immediately.
With a response.
And with a quick response time, and if there's even FOI requests and things like that, that we get quite frequently, I may reach out to them for information, and they'll handle it for us. I mean, they'll do the search, and then send the research to me, and I just forward it
Okay.
for the FOI request.
Well, we're happy with them.
I'm, I'm extremely happy with them.
Okay, okay.
And I think the trustees are too, as far as I know. I don't think there's been an issue.
Okay. I'm just curious how long it's been since we've.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, David. I'm not sure.
Or if it would even be a benefit, I just don't know. But I was confused.
We can certainly go out to RFP and.
Okay. I think I know where David's coming from. It sounds like it's been a Yeah, save me. revolving door for you, dealing with a different firm, different firm, different firm. So, but if, if you're saying that's all.
Oh, it's the same firm, they're just.
Yeah, I couldn't just read your face. I wasn't sure if you were like happy about this, or not happy about it, or. If everything's kosher and you're happy with the process, then.
Yeah, it's, it's a privately owned, Fiducient Advisors is privately owned, and they keep getting gobbled up by larger firms. But it's been beneficial every time it's happened.
As long as the level of service to the city isn't, isn't getting lost in all of these constant murders, whatever's happening. Yeah, and we're not getting feed to death, and our fees are within a respectable
No, not at all.
range, and, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions for Dan? No?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
HR, Denise, is there anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie? Thank you. Uh, City Corks Office.
You speaking into the mic? She always reminds you.
Oh, priceless.
Yeah. Yeah. Speaking of the mics.
Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, I'd like to just take this opportunity to introduce Tom Kalanowski. Tom, stand up. Many of you know Tom already, so Tom has been hired as Assistant Corporation Counsel. So I will remain as Corporation Counsel, but we've kind of flip-flopped where for a while, as Assistant, Tom was part-time, and I was full-time, but now I'm part-time and he's full-time. And it'll be up to Mayor Spino at some point. She'll need to appoint a new Corporation Counsel, because I'll be retiring at the end of December. And my expectation, if I'm not speaking out of school, is Mayor Spino will appoint Tom as the Corporation Counsel. So for now, he's kind of almost a shadowing thing. We're working together. I make him just sit in my office and watch me and listen to me. There's a lot to learn, and I think as a city council, you'll quickly come to realize that we need more lawyers in the Corporation Counsel's office, and we need to pay them more. So you don't have to deal with that now, but come budget season next season, I think Mayor Spino will be coming to you probably with some proposals to beef up the Corporation Counsel's office, because the amount of, of legal work in that office is really, it's astonishing, and it's hard, frankly, to keep up and to do a really good job.
Yeah.
But in any event, Tom, Tom will be the guy.
Have you been happy with Attorney Kalanowski so far?
You know, I don't know. He told me a story, something about roadkill. Somebody gave him a turkey. I thought, I don't know about this guy.
I don't know anything about that.
So far, so good. You know, as I say, the only thing that Attorney Kalanowski lacks is experience. And, you know, there's, there's nothing you can do about that, so the, the more experience he gets, I'm finding him to be diligent, earnest, a quick learner, and, you know, really very devoted and dedicated to the city. So I, I think he'll be a good fit.
Good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's everyone. Alright, moving on, I'd like to entertain a motion for business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
I will start online, Councilman Cavanero, if you have anything you'd like to say?
There we go, yes. One thing, congratulations to all the elected officials, and welcome to the show, Molly. And to clarify my position, I have not been, as you all know, I was not sworn in today. I mistakenly thought I could do this remotely. Since COVID, every single function of the City Council has been, you know, valid through this process, Zoom meetings, and doing things remotely with all the attendant necessary people involved, but City statute is unclear on this, and after discussions with Council Magistrally and Carol Anderson, City Clerk's Office, just to be very precise about this, I will not be voting until I come back and am officially sworn in person, which will be after January 6th, okay? So I will be sitting in on meetings, and I think I'm allowed to do that and ask questions that hopefully I would be asking after January 6th, but it seems more, if it seems more timely for me to put my concerns out now, I will do that. If anybody objects to that as well, then, you know, so be it, I'll certainly consider not even attending the meetings, but I don't think I'm doing any injustice by being here in this capacity, in a non-voting capacity until I'm officially sworn in. And to that point, one thing I would like to ask, if I'm, as long as I'm at the moment allowed to voice my concerns, I would like to follow up on the sale of the property. It seems to me both Councilman Bayes and Oliver were kind of pointing in the same direction about wanting to get a little bit more, just tracking that process, how much we're spending versus what are we getting back, and I would like, I'm not sure where David was going with that, how far back, I know he wanted to see some report on it, and I'd like to hear some clarification from David about what he was expecting to see at the council level in that regard specifically. Are you looking to see how many properties have been sold in the last X number of months or years, and how much we invested? I think this is going to where Councilman Bayes was going, how much have we invested in preparing these things to sell, and have we done, how successfully have we been doing that? In other words, the city making money at this, in this way? So I'd like the council to consider offering, you know, putting some clarification onto what we're expecting that presentation to really accomplish, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will move on to Councilman Bayes.
Just welcome to all of my fellow councilmen and women. I'm no stranger to this bench, as served on the Board of Finance, but definitely in a new capacity, I'm looking forward to it, so look forward to serving with all of you and Mayor Spino, and we'll do some good stuff, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hannah Harrell?
Hi. Thank you for having me, I'm excited to get started. Yes, thrown right in there and get to it, but I'm looking forward to it and getting some things done for the City of Torrington.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minnie Chia?
It's good to be back.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Congratulations to our newly-elected council member peers and new members to the council, Chris and Rachel, welcome, and Armon, welcome back, you know. And Paul, I was disappointed to hear that, but I know you'll voice your opinion needed on issues of importance, so, and you do always ask some very good questions, but congratulations, Mayor, I am excited about your new leadership and have great confidence in moving ahead.
Thank you.
And I'm glad I'm on your right side now, I guess, thanks for being over there, but...
This is your better side.
That's up for debate.
Councilman Oliver?
Hello, everybody, again, congratulations, like everybody else, so I won't beat that one, but to Paul's point, yeah, I think it's good for everyone who has been away from the board or is new to the council, excuse me, to have a better understanding of what blight is, how the city has historically approached it, how has our approach been effective? And then what happens? It's blighted, so how long does it stay on the list? What are we doing to try to work with property owners or not, dependent upon what's going on? So I think a more in-depth look or presentation on that would be, I think it would be worthwhile for all of us involved, and get us focusing back on the issue because I think it's something we all drive by, drive by all the time, or it's in our neighborhoods, and after a while, it just becomes wallpaper, we just keep driving by it, and we're desensitized to it. But obviously, blighted properties impact everybody, everybody around them, and there are certain circumstances where it's absolutely unavoidable because of health or finance or whatever, but you know, what are we doing to work with property owners to help turn those situations and get them off that list? So that's why I'm interested, I think everybody would be well-served by that education. Other than that, I got nothing else.
Thank you. I will add, I sat in my first Blight Committee meeting last week, I think it was, and I was surprised to see how many properties there really are.
There are more than people realize, and the other thing is, is you may only know the one in your neighborhood or the two that you drive down, but you don't know the other 37.
And what stage they're in too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think that would be a great idea, I know, as a councilwoman, I had asked for blight information quite a bit. So I think it's important that the council stays informed of that, and if we could, you know, put something together maybe for either the next meeting or the first meeting of January, if it's going to take some time, I know we've got holidays and vacation time. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, again, congratulations to everybody, welcome to our new members over here. I'm very excited to be here, bear with me, as I get used to running a meeting as a mayor and not sitting here as a councilwoman, it's a little bit different, and making sure I'm calling my motions right, and thank you to Judge Magistrally for making sure I don't skip a beat here. But again, congratulations to everybody, and thank you to Carol Anderson, Heather Abraham, and Richard Lopez for putting together that inauguration ceremony today, it was very well-done, so.
Agreed.
And that's all I've got. And I'll move on to, yes?
Mayor, I'd like to add one item to the agenda.
Okay.
With your approval?
You have my approval, we need two-thirds vote in the council though.
Yes, I'd like to move a motion to purchase the Yankee Peddler Sleigh, which is actually at a auction house in Burrville, at the Burrville Firehouse. And there are some funds that are available, but I'd like to first move the motion to purchase this Yankee Peddler Sleigh.
I'll second it.
So, the first motion is to add...
Right, I'm moving, I'm moving, thank you for the correction, Corporate Counsel, what would we do without him? Tom, you better step it up in January, keep us in line. Yes, I'd like to move a motion to add an agenda item.
I'll second.
Now you can ask all.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Now we make the motion, yeah.
Motion I'd like to make is to purchase the Yankee Peddler Sleigh for the price of $1,800.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, let's have discussion.
Discussion.
So, a little background on this, we found out this past weekend that the wagon that used to be in the Yankee Peddler lobby was back in Torrington and for sale at an antique place. So that was brought to our attention, I thought it was something that we should bring to council and see if it's something that we can save, it's a little bit of Torrington history, it's a little bit of money that we have in a line item that we can spend for this item, and hopefully somewhere we can get it displayed in the future. Ideally, I know after Councilwoman Ruette and I had talked about it, was maybe the new owners of the Yankee Peddler would like to display it when they open it up, maybe in their lobby, possibly working with Preservation Torrington or the Historical Society to see if there's somewhere in Torrington that we can put this. I would hate to see this disappear again, like it's been gone for the past 10 years, not knowing where it was. And now that it's been found, I think it's pretty exciting, I know I was excited to see the pictures of it when I found out about it. So that's the background on it, if anybody has questions?
Just to add to, sorry, we should all direct our questions to the mayor. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
This was actually discovered, you know, some of you know I love estate sales, and Stephen knows that as well. But you know, this is a history of Torrington, and I know at one point the Torrington Historical Society was interested in having it donated to them, but they were not, the person that owns it right now was not able to do that, they had to take it out of storage for $1,800, and really just wants to get his money back. I just think it's one of those things that we shouldn't let go, and it's, the individual at the Burrville Firehouse has been open to holding that sleigh, it's a sleigh. So if any of you remember the history of that sleigh, it goes way back, they actually used to transport people from Torrington Company or other areas to the, you know, Yankee Peddler Hotel, and then back. So it's got a long history for, it's very cold. Cold, that's it.
So this line item, Mayor, is a little more clarification, it's an eviction slash Christmas?
Christmas time fund that we have money put away for Christmas decorations downtowns
So, so this will close that count out, pretty much?
Yep.
Sorry.
It's a nice piece of history worth preserving, especially in this community.
Well, especially since the lawsuit that the city has against the owner of, the current owner of Yankee Peddler, I mean, it's just, I also think it's a nice legacy for our former mayor.
Yeah.
Have the city own it.
And just a little bit of background too, my understanding was when they were renovating the Yankee Peddler, that these items were supposed to go into storage, but everything was auctioned off without anyone's knowledge.
Yep.
So everything's kind of all over the place, so for us to find such a big piece of Yankee Peddler history, I think is really cool.
Absolutely.
So. Any other questions?
Let's vote.
Move the motion. I'll move the motion.
And we seconded, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Alright, moving on to number 10, I would like to entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public to comment on agenda items only.
He has to get up.
Don't wait for me.
Nope, yeah, we've...
Anybody move it?
So moved.
So moved.
Second? Anne?
Sorry, I was reading the note.
All in favor?
It came up.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on agenda items only? Okay.
Just on the last, the last item. I am the president of Preservation Torrington, and on behalf of everybody, thank you very much. We'd love to work with the city to find a place to put the sleigh for you, or the wagon, sleigh or wagon.
More of a carriage.
Yeah, okay, whatever. But I think it's wonderful that you did put the money forward to get it, and be happy to work with everybody on that, so that we can hopefully get it back in the peddler, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? No? Alright. Then, moving on to number 11, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Great first meeting.